The 3:30 p.m. meeting of the Bakersfield City Council is now in session.
Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to call to order the 3:30 regular city council meeting of May 14, 2025. Madam Clerk, please call to roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Corr. Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Coman.
Here.
Councilmember Bashir Tash.
Here.
Thank you. In keeping with council's resolution, public statements are received at different times depending on the item. I will call on the city clerk to call for public statements. If you wish to make a public statement, please fill out the public speaker card and place it in the tray next to the speaker podium. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on today's agenda or on a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify a specific agenda item will be presumed speakers for the non-agenda public statements. If you're here to speak on an item not listed on the meeting agenda, you'll be called first to speak. Statements are given a two-minute time limit per speaker, 20 minutes total for all non-agenda item public statements. If you're here to speak on an item listed on the agenda, I will call for you at the appropriate time. If public statements become disruptive and I have to clear the chambers to regain order of the meeting, you'll be called in one at a time to provide your public statement when your item is called. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by resolution of the city council. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting, prevents the city council from conducting the business of the city. Consider this a first warning to everyone in attendance that conduct that disrupts this meeting may result in expulsion and/or the chambers being cleared. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items not listed on the agenda?
Mayor Go, we've received two speaker cards regarding items not listed on today's agenda. The first speaker is Eddie Lane.
Thank you. Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Eddie Lane with the Sarah Club. I'm here with the happy task of advertising an upcoming tree dialogue. We had one a little more than a month ago. I think it was very productive. Attached to this announcement are findings that we had during that tree dialogue with the city of Fresno. City of Fresno is their urban tree forest management plan is kind of a model. It was part of the appendum that was adopted by the council some months ago, and the dialogue was very healthy. I was pleased that several city staff members were present, and there has been follow-up with the city of Fresno. Interestingly, in Fresno, for example, they do tree trimming by district or by ward every 10 years. So you know ahead of time where the tree trimming is going to be done, and that's one facet of what they do. Looking ahead, though, next week, we have, we're very honored to have the head of the Kentucky State, he's the Kentucky State Director of the Nature Conservancy. He has agreed to be with us. There was a handout that was maybe two months ago provided by Maria Polite to the council, and it talks about the healing effect of trees. This was a major study not only just by Nature Conservancy, but by the University of Kentucky and others, I can't say Kentucky, and others in the community. One of the principal sponsors behind that was former Republican United States Senator Bill Frisk. So it had wide support. So please take a look at this. If you or someone else would like to be a part of our Zoom meeting, we'd be glad to have you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lane. Next speaker, please.
Michael Turnipseed.
Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm Michael Turnipseed. I represent the Kern County Taxpayers Association. Since we're starting round two of our sewer improvements, whatever we're doing here in the process and updates, want to bring up some things, some of the council responsibilities to make sure that things are adequately done. First of all, that full cost accounting is done to ensure that all direct and indirect costs, including operational expenses, maintenance, and capital improvements have been accounted for, which would have set appropriate pricing structures that reflect actual cost of service delivery. Establish reserve policies. This council has not maintained adequate reserves for unexpected expenses, economic downturns, or significant capital expenditures. Asset management. The city has failed to track and maintain physical assets systematically to extend their useful life and reduce their long-term costs. There are many software tools out there that allow the city to do that. Transference financial reporting. The city does not require adequate transparent financial projections and reporting, which is fundamental for prudent asset management. Regular financial analysis. The city has not conducted regular financial analysis to monitor revenue or expenditures to make informed decisions and adjust long-term strategies as needed. Stakeholder communication. The city has not maintained open lines of communication with the ratepayers, which is obvious. Regulatory compliance. Old, outdated facilities make it difficult to stay up to date with local state and federal regulations. Compliance is critical to avoid any legal questions or that operations remain smooth. And finally, performance metrics. The city has not developed and monitored performance metrics to evaluate service efficiency and effectiveness, which helps identify improvement areas and ensure high-quality service. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Turnipseed. Madam Clerk, do we have any other speakers?
Mayor Go, we have not received any additional speaker cards, and we have not received any speaker cards for agenda items.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Closed session. Item 4A, Conference with Labor Negotiator, and Item 4B, Conference with Legal Counsel Existing Litigation Regarding City of Bakersfield v. 3M Company.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn to closed session.
Return to closed session. Reconvening the 3:30 meeting. Madam City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. There were two items in closed session this afternoon. On Item 4A, there is no reportable action. And on Item 4B, by a 6-0 vote with the Vice Mayor Corr absent, the city attorney was given direction. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, that meeting stands adjourned at 5:12.
Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the county of Kern, and the city of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 p.m., Sunday at 10:00 a.m., and the following Wednesday at 7:00 p.m. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 regular city council meeting of May 14, 2025. Madam Clerk, please call to roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Corr. Councilmember Arias.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Coman.
Here.
And Councilmember Bashir Tash.
Here.
Welcome to all of you. It's good to have all of you participating in the process. Tonight, we had the pleasure, if he is here, Chief Terry, I do not believe is here. It's National Police Week, so we were going to have Chief Terry lead the invocation, but in that he's not here, we're going to ask Councilmember Smith to do that. And then following the invocation, we had the pleasure of having Dick Taylor, United States Marine Corps veteran, to lead us in the pledge. Dick was the former director of the Kern County Veteran Services, and he's currently the president of the Bakersfield National Cemetery Support Committee, and he is a rep for the Kern County Devil Pups, encouraging young people to move on into the Marine Corps. So now, would you all stand? And Councilmember Smith, please.
Father God, we thank you for this day, and we thank you for the opportunity to serve our community. Please give us wisdom. Please guide us as the decisions we make. There are always hard times, but we know in the end that you will guide, and your outcome is what happens. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Okay, if you'll join me in saluting the flag of the greatest nation on the earth, these United States of America. Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. Thank you, Councilmember Smith, and thank you so much, Mr. Taylor. We just appreciate your highlighting the greatest nation. We are blessed to live in this country. Next item, please.
Presentations. Item 4A, proclamation to Jeremy Tobias, CEO of Community Action Partnership of Kern, and CAP-K Board Chair Maritza Jimenez, declaring May 2025 as Community Action Month in Bakersfield.
Colleagues, May 2025 has been designated as National Community Action Month, celebrating our nation's 1,000-plus community action agencies. But we have the best in Bakersfield, in Kern County. We are so fortunate that we have CAP-K that connects people to life-changing services and pathways for prosperity right here in our very community. Those who are the most challenged, for 60 years, this group has innovated and impacted and has demonstrated proven results. So it's my honor to be able to present this proclamation. Whereas Community Action Partnership of Kern has made essential contributions to individuals and families across Kern County by creating economic opportunities and strengthening communities, whereas CAP-K addresses underlying causes of poverty, alleviates the effects, and promotes dignity and self-sufficiency in the communities we serve, and whereas CAP-K delivered more than 22 million pounds of food across Kern County in 2024 through the CAP-K Food Bank, and whereas CAP-K operates the Friendship House Community Center located in Bakersfield that works with children within our city, providing a site for educational assistance, mentorship, and community. Now, therefore, I, Karen Go, Mayor of the city of Bakersfield, do hereby proclaim May 2025 as National Community Action Month in our city, and thank CAP-K for its dedicated service to our Bakersfield residents. It's my pleasure to be able to present this to Jeremy Tobias, the CEO, and he'll introduce his fantastic team. Thanks so much, Jeremy.
Thank you, Mayor Go, and Honorable City Council. I want to thank you for declaring May as Community Action Month here in Bakersfield. Joining me today is my board chair, Maritza Jimenez, and our outreach director, Savannah Oat. Community Action Partnership of Kern was established in May of 1965. Our vision is very clear. We envision a community with opportunities for everyone to achieve self-sufficiency and to attain the American dream. It's pretty simple. CAP-K operates 20 different programs that serve Bakersfield and Kern County. I'll highlight a couple of them. Head Start Early Childhood Education. There are 12 Head Start locations in Bakersfield that provide high-quality education to children in their first five years of life, so that they can enter kindergarten prepared to succeed. The CAP-K Food Bank distributes, as you heard, 22.5 million pounds of food annually in Kern County from our location in southeast Bakersfield. They are able to do this with a very lean staff because here in Bakersfield, specifically in Bakersfield, there are more than 177 food pantries and commodity locations that help us distribute 13.9, almost 14 million pounds of food in 2024 here in Bakersfield. This is our network of local churches, community groups, schools, and volunteers that tirelessly distribute food in our community. Two-in-one services operate 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. Our call center is operating, connecting people to more than 1,500 different services locally. Our CalVIP program, this successful partnership with our Friendship House Community Center at the Bakersfield PD, amongst other community partners, has prevented violence, provided job skills, resume support, and assisted individuals in finding employment. It is helping break the cycle of violence in parts of our community. Our Veteran Services Program, in March of 2025, the California Veterans Assistance Foundation officially merged with CAP-K, forming our new Veterans and Support Services Division. This strategic integration has ensured a seamless transition with no lapse in service. The Veteran Services Division continues the longstanding mission to serve homeless, at-risk, and low-income veterans and their families through housing, advocacy, and support services. All services have remained active during this transition and are now only strengthened under CAP-K's broader community support framework. Looking ahead, CAP-K is proud to be planning a ribbon-cutting ceremony in the month of June for a new 13-unit tiny home project known as Covey Cottages. A formal announcement is coming soon. This development will provide permanent housing for veterans and reflects our commitment to ending veteran homelessness. We are also very enthusiastic about our newest partnership with the city on the Ram Kabir Project and the Home Key Plus funding application we're working with the city on. Our programs rely very heavily on community partners to create success, and we are honored to partner with the city of Bakersfield to meet the needs of this community. On behalf of our staff and our board of directors, thank you for an amazing partnership.
Mayor, if I may make a comment while you take a photo. I just want to commend Community Action Partnership of Kern County on behalf of my ward, the Urban Corps of Bakersfield, and all the work that you've done throughout the years. You know, I had an opportunity recently to visit the LBJ Library, and Community Action Partnerships throughout the country actually started as a result of the War on Poverty in the '60s. And so I want to thank you because Community Action Partnership has really been a beacon of light and hope in many tough times for the families that I represent, dark times, when homelessness was at its apex. Community Action Partnership did not step away. They did not shy away from the issue. They actually ran towards the problem, and they raised their hand and said, "We want to be a solution," and they led the effort for the M Street Navigation Center. When the pandemic occurred and we were all experiencing so much fear and uncertainty, Community Action Partnership stood up and continued to serve all of our families through food distributions and lots of other services. And I really appreciate all the work that you do, day in and day out, your whole team, for those people that I represent and throughout our city. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And also, finally, thank you for moving downtown. It's wonderful to have so many of your administrative employees working right here in the downtown, the heart of the city, and makes downtown that much better. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. One comment I'd like to make, and real quick, is community action agencies are all different. Every one of the 1,000 agencies are all different. No matter where you travel in the country, some are big, some are small, some run Head Start, some don't. They're all different because they reflect the needs of the community and the programs that are needed in the community. And CAP-K, we hope, is very reflective of our community, the pride we have in the community, and the goals we have should be reflective of the community we serve, and we really try hard to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy, Savannah, and Maritza. We appreciate you. And go forth and serve more now. Thank you. Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones. Please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos for safety reasons. And as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the council chamber or in the lobby. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting, but not during other portions of the meeting. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by resolution of the city council. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting, prevents the city council from conducting the business of the city. Consider this a first warning to everyone in attendance that conduct that disrupts the meeting may result in expulsion and/or the chambers being cleared. Behavior that disrupts the meeting includes repetitive statements, shouting, hate speech, interrupting staff or presenters during the meeting, speaking out of turn, outbursts from the audience, and surpassing the two-minute time limit. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items not listed on the agenda?
Mayor Go, we've received four speaker cards for items not listed on this evening's agenda. The first public speaker is Dr. Chris Cruz Boon. Thank you so much.
Welcome, and please introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Dr. Chris Cruz Boon, and I am a trustee with Bakersfield City School District, and I am here just to talk to you for a few moments about safe routes to school and support the petition that our community members from one of our schools and one of our board members is going to bring forward in a moment. As a school board trustee and educator and a mom of a daily walker to school, I believe it is all of our responsibility, not just to protect our classrooms, but to protect our children the moment they step outside their door to go to our schools. And I want to share with you two things. I am an educator and I'm also a mom of a child who's walked to school since fourth grade. He's now in 10th grade, and I watch him every day as he moves on his way, and every single time it stops. I think, is it a red light or is it a lifted truck? That's what I think when I watch that dot moving to school every day. We, as a community, need to take more responsibility in lighting our crosswalks and making sure that they're visible and making sure that speeds are displayed so that mothers like me don't have to worry. I'm also an educator. I teach at the Kern Adult School on Panama Lane in H, and I live downtown by the Bakersfield Art Museum at least four times a year. I bicycle from my home to my school location where I teach because I think it's important to empathize with my students' experiences, and also because I love to be active outside when the weather is nice in Kern County. I know it doesn't happen a lot, but there are those of us who really love to be pedestrians and walk and ride. And I will share with you that one route to take is just to go all the way up H Street. There are no sidewalks, and there is no bike lane, and so you have to stop and walk many times. I've actually had to pull over on my bike and help people in electronic scooters and in wheelchairs to get through the cracked dirt that is there because you can't easily pass through that route all the way up that street. It's just not passable for a pedestrian. The other option is to take Union. I've done that as well. It's a little bit better now. I know my time is out. Please, let's find a way to make things safe for everyone who wants to walk, ride a bike, or even just let their kids leave their doorstep. Thank you so much.
Dr. Boon, thank you, and thank you for your service to our students and their families. Just a reminder to the audience, we don't allow applause during this time. I know you're passionate about it and may agree, but that's just part of the protocol here, but thank you. Next speaker, please.
Brooke Malley Alt.
Welcome, trustee.
Good evening, members of city council. My name is Brooke Malley Alt, and I proudly serve as trustee for Area 5 of the Bakersfield City School District. I'm here tonight to speak not just on behalf of Roosevelt Elementary School, but for all the children attending schools and neighborhoods that have been historically overlooked when it comes to infrastructure and safety. Recently, the community around Roosevelt Elementary experienced a heartbreaking loss. Eight-year-old Richie Aguilar, a student at that school, was hit and killed while walking home just blocks from campus. In response, 328 parents and community members signed a petition asking for crosswalks to be installed. I want to thank you for hearing that call. Those crosswalks have now been completed, and additional crossing guard has been added by BCSD near Roosevelt. But crosswalks are just the beginning. As you drive through more affluent neighborhoods in Bakersfield, you'll find speed humps, flashing school signs, and well-marked pedestrian routes. These are not luxuries. They're safety standards. Our children within BCSD deserve the same level of protection as the other side of town. Tonight, I'm asking for a traffic study on First and A Street and for the installation of a single speed bump in honor of Richie, speed hump. One safety measure at one school can make a lasting impact. More importantly, it can show our community that their children's lives are valued equally regardless of zip code. I would like to ask for increased safety measures, primarily school humps around all BCSD schools, but I know now is not the proper time due to budget cuts to make that ask. I would like to start with one and observe as that one street becomes walkable 24 hours a day, not just when the crossing guard is present. Unfortunately, people are more likely to slow down for a hump rather than a crosswalk or a crossing guard. Drivers will only slow down if they know their car will be damaged, and it will only happen once before they slow down every single time. I believe in a Bakersfield where every child can walk to and school safely, I urge you to help make that vision a reality. Thank you for your time and commitment to equity and safety. I'll go ahead and leave the petition here as well.
Thank you, trustee Alt. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, trustee Alt, for being here tonight. Thank you, trustee Cruz Boon, for also participating tonight and providing some leadership for our community and for all of our families in Bakersfield City School District. You know, the tragedy that occurred at Roosevelt has stuck with me for several months, and I don't think will leave my heart anytime soon. It is a complete tragedy. It is something that I cannot fathom, and my heart and prayers still go out to the family. And I know that feeling is expressed and shared by many of my colleagues up here. I agree. We must do more, and we've, many of us on this dais have felt that way for years now. My colleague, Councilmember Smith, has been calling for enhanced pedestrian and bicycle safety measures throughout the city for 13 years now. When I was vice mayor, I created the first multimodal transportation committee. That was three years ago. That was actually Councilmember Arias's idea because he also cares deeply about pedestrian and bicycle safety. Councilmember Corr, when she was elected, one of her first acts, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Clegg, but she organized a meeting with staff and school administrators throughout the city to address some of those same issues that she's facing in South Bakersfield. I've worked with the school district and various different schools within my ward for the last eight years. We adopted the very first neighborhood traffic calming handbook. There's many of us on this dais who understand. We get it. We want to do more. We are pushing to do more, and we welcome the community to continue to show up and to support those efforts and to partner with us because we know that this tragedy should not have happened. But we know that so many people, too many people, are driving far too fast, and they're distracted on their devices. And we have to create roadways. We have to design better roadways that protect all children because not all of us have the luxury of getting dropped off to school. When I was in junior high school, I walked to school. When I was in high school, I walked to school. My parents did not have the means to chauffeur me around, and there are thousands upon thousands of children throughout our city who have to walk and bike to school. We have to make conditions safer for all of them, and I'm thankful that you're pointing out examples. I have a list of many, many, many areas where we need to improve, and you have my commitment, the community has my commitment as one council member to continue to push this issue. And I hear that same commitment from many of my colleagues on the city council, and it starts with our budget. It starts with actually budgeting items, making sure that we're being serious about this issue, making sure that we understand that pedestrian safety and bicycle safety is a public safety issue. And if anyone questions that, I wish you could have been there with me and the community those days shortly after Richie lost his life. And tell me this is not a public safety issue. We can't reverse time, unfortunately, but we can move forward, and we can continue to look at issues and look at ways in which we can increase safety for all people, for all users, whether they're in their vehicle or on their bicycle or they're walking or they're in a wheelchair. We can do better. We will do better. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to reinforce what Councilmember Gonzalez was saying. It's about public safety. It's infrastructure, traffic calming. You mentioned lighted crosswalks, safety standards throughout the city. I bicycle every single day the streets of Bakersfield, and I see the bad spots, like you said, H Street, and you find better routes. But there are, we continually have to continue to push. Our Public Safety and Vital Services Committee is making a recommendation to us that traffic calming is not. calming is not public safety. We have 44 members of our community die of violent tragic death last year on our streets. And somehow, making those streets safer is not public safety. I don't understand, but there are those in the community that think that. So I appreciate you coming forward, and we continue to push forward, but we need other voices, and so I appreciate your voices. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Tracy Spencer.
Welcome, please introduce yourself.
My name is Tracy Spencer. This is my son, Nicholas Spencer. There's a lot bigger fish to fry here than what I'm going to bring up, but across the street from us, I live at Parkwood Apartments. I manage, I'm the manager there for Parkwood and Frank St. Clair. Across the street is a party hall that disrupts many of my tenants till 12 and 2:00 in the morning. We are a family-oriented complex, and the owner doesn't seem to care. He has parties over there till 12:00 at night and 2:00 in the morning. I've tried to come to a resolution with him, and he doesn't seem to want to come to any resolution with me, being that I have tenants that work, and he just wants to keep the noise up. So I called the police. The police can't always respond because they're responding to other calls. So I'm here to try to get some help from you guys on what to do as a resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Spencer. Mr. Clegg, can staff just follow up? Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have your contact information, so thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Nicholas. Next speaker, please.
Josie and Jasmine.
Welcome, please introduce yourself.
I'm Josie. This is Jasmine. We are here in counting of what they're talking about, of the public safety. My son is Alejandro Vargas. He was killed on Niles and Park Drive as a pedestrian crossing the street. Her son is Angel. He was killed a half a block away from where mine was killed at. We, thankfully, with Letitia Perez, we were able to get flashlights in that area for our children to cross. There are seven schools in that school zone. It actually took two children to die for us to get something done there. We don't, we're asking for, all over Bakersfield, for more public safety for our children. We're letting our kids come out of our household, and the school is being responsible for the moment they walk out that door to the moment they walk back into the house. We do need more law enforcement because people speed on the school zones even though kids are still crossing. At Stern, back in March, there was a crossguard that was hit while he was stopping the cars while kids were crossing the street. Like, we need more law enforcement. We do need more lights in the area in all school zones, crosswalks, sidewalks, speed bumps, something needs to be done. We do not need no more mothers to be burying their children while they're going to school or after school anymore. And we, I've been speaking out for six years, and something, my voice was not getting heard until her son got killed. And that's when our doors got open. One of my close friends saw Richie's, they got ahold of me between me and Jasmine. We've been advocating a lot. I have a petition going on. I changed.org, and I have 1,500 signatures there already, helping out to try to get something better done for Bakersfield.
Mayor, go. I just wanted to thank you for your part in kind of pushing Foothill High School to recognize my son at their graduation. I just wanted to say I really appreciate what you did.
Thank you. Josie and Jasmine, we're so sorry for your loss of Alejandro and Angel, and we hear what you're saying, so thank you for speaking.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
We have not received any additional speaker cards, Mayor, nor have we received speaker cards for agenda items.
Thank you. And now, next item, please.
Appointments, item 6A, appointment of conference committee members to fill at-large vacancy on Golden Empire Transit District Board of Directors. Staff has provided a memorandum requesting this item be pulled from the agenda tonight.
Thank you. And next item.
Consent calendar items 7A through 7I for approval.
Thank you. I don't see any requests. I haven't received anything from the council to recuse themselves or pull an item, and so, councilmember Gonzalez.
Move to adopt the consent calendar.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, with councilmember Corr absent.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Public hearing, item 9A.
Thank you. Next item, public hearings. Each side will be allowed 15 minutes. It's 15 minutes for all speakers per side, so it's important that you identify yourself, make your statements succinctly so others may speak. We'll hear statements from those opposed to staff's recommendation first, and we'll hear from those who'd like to speak in favor. If there's testimony on both sides, each side will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal. There's a clock on the TV screens behind me which indicates 15 minutes. Please step to the microphone and identify yourself. After 14 minutes, a yellow light will come on. At the end of 15 minutes, a red light will flash indicating your time is up, so quickly end your statements. You may ask questions during your statement, but they won't be addressed until the public hearing is closed. If you have comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please give them to the clerk. She'll provide copies to the council. Please be courteous to others who wish to speak. Madam Clerk, please read the public hearing item. Sorry.
Public hearing, item 9A, public hearing to consider a resolution approving the issuance of California Municipal Finance Authority Revenue and Refunding Bonds for Human Good.
Thank you. Madam City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, Human Good is a California nonprofit corporation, and they have requested the California Municipal Finance Authority issue bonds in the amount of $205 million. Those bonds are set to be used for the renovations of the popular community center known as Rosewood here in town. In order for those bonds to be tax-exempt, the group, Human Good, as well as the California Municipal Finance Authority, they have asked us, which is appropriate, to go through what's called a TEFRA hearing. I know some of you are familiar with the TEFRA hearings. TEFRA stands for Tax and Equity Fiscal Responsibility Act. I think what's important here for your listening audience, as well as for the council, is to realize that the city has zero, no, financial, legal, or any type of liability or responsibility or obligation concerning the project, any of the renovations, or any facet of repayment of the bonds. And there are two representatives here this evening, if you have any questions. One is from the Human Good, and we also have someone here from the California Municipal Finance Authority, if any of you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. So at this time, public hearing, item 9A, is open. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to the staff's recommendation? Please come to the microphone and identify yourself. Seeing none, is there anyone who would like to speak in support? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, return it to council for comment and action. I don't see any request to speak. Can we have a motion?
Move the adoption of the resolution.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, with councilmember Corr absent.
Thank you. And madam clerk, next item, please.
Deferred Business, item 11A, rescind Proposition 218 Notice Concerning Fiscal Year 25-26 Proposed Increases to Sewer Rates. Correspondence has been received from the vice mayor, who requests I read the following into the record. I, Vice Mayor Corr, am not in attendance at tonight's city council meeting due to a family medical issue. I want to express my support for rescinding the Prop 218 sewer notice, so we, as the city council, along with city management, can reevaluate rates that are feasible for our residents. I apologize for not being in attendance, but you have my assurance that I will work alongside my colleagues to walk back this process and redesign something that makes sense for all.
Thank you. If you're here to speak on Deferred Business, item 11A, the city clerk will call for public statements after staff's presentation. Each speaker will be limited to two minutes, and there will be a 20-minute time limit total. Mr. Clegg.
Thank you, Mayor and council. At our last city council meeting, I had given the rationale for staff's recommendation to rescind the Proposition 218 Notice. For the benefit of the public who may not have seen that, I'll just reiterate in quick summary that we believe there's a good opportunity to do some additional analysis, to just confirm some of the numbers that we have provided, do some additional analysis to consider any and all alternatives to this issue. I reiterated at that time that we expect that there still is a significant need to address a real gap in long-range capital planning for our sewer system, and that we will bring this issue back, we believe, this calendar year. But we're going to take time to make sure that the analysis is a little bit deeper, and also, more importantly, really to take the time to share information with the community. We believe that the scope of this challenge, there's not a simple solution to it, but we owe it to our community to better communicate what are the real issues, to have more discussion and dialogue, so the community can appreciate and understand those needs, and ultimately, again, bring forward a recommendation to the city council and from the council to the community that is both administratively manageable, but also feasible for our rate payers. And so, for those reasons, we are recommending that we rescind the current Proposition 218 process, continue in the next four to six months to do that additional analysis, and come back and do better outreach to the community.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public speaker requests for this item?
Mayor, we've received two speaker cards regarding this item. The first speaker is Roman Matera.
Thank you. Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Whereas our infrastructure is an important facet of our city, crucial to our quality of life, and whereas a functional sewer system is crucial to maintaining the health and safety of our city, and whereas the reckless expansion of suburbs has created a funding crisis in California, since they take more in public funds to maintain than they pay back in local taxes, resulting in a shifting of the tax burden through such taxes as a sales tax, and whereas this crisis has created and worsened issues of homelessness, poverty, crime, and climate change, therefore, be it resolved in this resolution that we, the signatories of this petition, support the city of Bakersfield's attempt to raise the sewer fee from $250 to $950. And be it further resolved that we support the city of Bakersfield's efforts to address this crisis through the zoning for and construction of new apartments, and hope for continued progress in this area. Now, I deliver this petition with 12 signatures. It was finals week, there weren't a lot of people around. And furthermore, I'd just like to say, I think that you guys haven't been charitable enough to yourselves. People are talking about lack of transparency regarding the action. You sent out the letter. You told people where they had to go in order to address their concerns. And I know that electorally, this is a bit of a third-rail issue, but as someone who's been around city council, I know what it's like when you guys are not transparent, no offense. I think you guys handled this issue very well. So even if you can't express it publicly, be a bit more kind to yourselves. I think you were perfectly fine. And yes, just to reiterate one more time, we are explicitly asking you to raise the sewer rates to the original proposition and maintain that instead of rescinding it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matera. Next speaker, please.
Debbie Busby.
Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Debbie Busby, a lifelong resident of Kern County. I live in Ward 4. Bob Smith is my representative. I want to thank you all for your service and your time tonight. I'm here opposing the sewer, the proposed sewer rates. You're going to table it. I know you were all shocked at the response from the city, just as we were shocked when we received that notice of the 400% increase. As a taxpayer, I don't think that's right, that we have been paying our taxes believing our tax dollars were being used for the appropriate reasons. As individuals, we do maintenance on our homes, on our cars, on our bodies in form of exercise, so as to have no surprise bills or problems. It seems the city has not done the same with our tax dollars. The increase proposed will cause a great hardship to many senior citizens that live in the city of Bakersfield and people on a limited income such as social security. Where have our tax dollars gone? I ask that you reconsider what you have and find a different way to repair or replace the existing systems. Could dollars from Measure N possibly be used? We trust each of you to use our tax dollars appropriately and not wait years to address our maintenance issues. It's a city manager's responsibility, and each of your responsibilities to count for the injustice increase to taxpayers and what went wrong. Where are our tax dollars that were collected for the purpose of maintaining these sewers? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Busby. Madam Clerk, are there any other speakers?
Mayor, that was our final speaker.
Thank you. And next item, please. Oh, sorry, we're not quite there yet. Jumped ahead a little bit. So at this point, motion?
Mayor, I'll make a motion that the city council rescind the Prop 218 Notice Concerning Fiscal Year 25-26 Proposed Increases to Sewer Rates that was authorized for publication and distribution on March 26, 2025.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I was trying to get this.
Oh, that's okay. You hit the wrong one?
No, it just won't.
Oh, it won't? Let's do a voice vote, please.
No, I wanted to make comments.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor.
And I see councilmember Coleman now, too.
I just wanted to respond a little bit. Earlier at the 3:30 meeting, we had Michael Turnipseed from the Kern Taxpayers Association, and he gave a few items, you know, as we moved backwards and forwards with this sewer. And he talked about reserve policies, and I think that is an important item to consider as we move forward, is, again, this issue should have been addressed in the mid-1990s. At that time, that plant was 30-plus years old, pushing 40 years old, and some reserves should have been started to put away at that time. And to answer your question about where your tax dollars have went, it's an enterprise fund for sewer tax dollars, and so they only are spent on sewer. But the problem has been that there was no reserve fund. There was only enough for the annual maintenance and patch what breaks. And so we have had extremely low sewer rates compared nationally. It's what we wanted to raise it to, is the average nationally, and local cities, Arvin Delano, are much higher than ours. So the point is, is that we've undertaxed and undersaved for 30 years, and now we have this problem. So moving forward, as we decide which avenue to go, the reserve policies need to be set in place so that this doesn't happen again. And that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Smith. And tech services, can you restart councilmember Smith's monitor as need be, because he's having problems with signing in? Councilmember Coleman.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to reiterate councilmember Smith's comments about the sewer rates, that we're going to be back here.
going to be back here again with, actually, you didn't say that, so I may have rephrased that. Let me get off that and just go to, go write my own comments, to say that, you know, we're going to be back here again on these rate, on the rates for the sewer. They, it's, it's, all the focus has been on wastewater treatment plant number two, and that, that needs to be rebuilt. There's a lot of other things that are in that, that allocation, including replacing sewer systems downtown, replacing or adding a parallel line down Buena Vista, because the line that was put in was undersized when it was installed, and now it won't meet the capacity that we're going to have soon. Wastewater treatment plant number three is at 78% of capacity, so, you know, we need to be looking at, you know, what needs to be done there so that we don't run out of the capacity, and so we don't want to have to ever have a building moratorium, which would literally cripple our economy. We certainly don't want a failure of plant number two, because that would definitely cripple our economy if we had some spillage from that location. What we can say is that we want to take a chance at looking at different options, different ways to finance that. But I, I don't want to mislead people. There were mistakes made in the past. We can't undo those, but we can make sure that going forward, that we provide all the information and all the public outreach we can to try to make it as palatable as possible. What I wanted to note here is that I had asked the, I had asked the city clerk here this afternoon to tally up the number of letters they've received in opposition to this plan, and this is not scientific, it's not been certified or validated, but they have nearly 3,000 letters from residents that comply, presumably comply with the requirements. That's pretty significant. And so, what I wanted to do is I wanted to make a further referral to staff to, my experience on redevelopment agency led me to understand the benefits of public-private partnerships, and I've already sent this referral in writing to the city manager, but I wanted to take an opportunity to say it from the dais, that there are several cities in California that are doing progressive things with public-private partnerships in relation to wastewater and to domestic water treatment. And although I don't believe there's a benefactor out there that's going to give us $500 million, there may be some partner out there that's able to partner with us, to possibly use some of the biogases that are a result of our, our digesters and that kind of thing, or install, you know, wind, solar, something on our properties to help offset those, so that we can maybe develop some future revenue. What I asked the, the city manager to do was to investigate consulting with a company that's capable of, of doing that, and I gave him some names of some companies that did Anyway, I gave him some direction on that, and I, I think you have it in writing, so I don't need to read it from here. But I, I think that there's an opportunity for us to, to look at different ways to do this, and I don't think it's going to relieve the burden on the city, but it help, might help offset it somewhat, so. And that's all my comments. I support Councilmember Gonzalez's motion, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Coleman. I don't see any other requests to speak. You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved with Councilmember Corr absent.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Council and Mayor Statements.
Is anybody having problems signing in? Councilmember Bashir Tash.
I just had a few questions, Mr. Clegg, in regards to repaving and road maintenance. I was curious as to where on the calendar, Meag Avenue, Wyble to Gosford is going to be. I'd like to know where on the calendar, White, on White Lane, Wyble to Gosford is, is, as well as El Portal from Ming to Westworld, Laurel Glen, and Half Moon. And then I'd also like to know what's in front of them as far as the roads go. I would also like to request another personnel meeting and on the agenda, I don't know, being on the council for only a few months, what it would look like to set maybe a policy workshop or create, I'd like to create, look at creating some policy for personnel. And so, I'd like to refer that back to you regarding personnel in a meeting soon. And then I have two budget questions. I'd like to know how much we've spent since 2020 to the Open Door Network, as well as Moss Adams, both from 2020 till current, how much we've spent. And then lastly, public safety, and I heard it tonight at the dais, isn't just, you know, police, but also making sure that kids are safe and pedestrians are safe. But I, Mr. Smith, I have to, to address a comment that you made that no one on PSVS is in agreement with your ideas of public safety, and I would say that that's not true, and that's a little bit disrespectful to accuse them of that without them being here to confront that and speak to that. I would say that they might be more, just not on the same page of what your idea to implement looks like, but I think that public safety is definitely a care for them, to sacrifice time to volunteer to, to be a part of that committee. And I think it was my, and it was in, and maybe it's in reference to bike lanes and that being an ongoing issue, but I think it was the first or second meeting that I sat up here, and I listened to a consultant say that he wouldn't advise bike lanes on certain streets, and when you hear that in the public from the consultant that put that together, and then you look at where we've put our bike lanes, you add two and two together, and his recommendation with those, you know, what we've done are very dangerous, and he would recommend against that. That was the consultant that was in charge of that. It's not a matter of not, not liking that, it's a matter of finding the most effective way of protecting our kids and pedestrians and, and adding a layer of accountability and adding that in our city for, for everyone. There needs to be more account, people need to be held accountable for breaking the law, for speeding, for being reckless. But I, I just wanted to bring that up, just I didn't think that was very fair.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Gonzalez.
You know, council, homelessness has been our number-one priority since I've been on the council, along with public safety. And we've relied on many community partners to really carry out the day-to-day, to help address those who are experiencing homelessness, who are in crisis and who need help. Open Door Network has actually been one of the strongest partners for the city for decades. If, if, if my memory serves me correct, when Open Door, the Bakersfield Homeless Center actually opened up, it was the city of Bakersfield that first partnered and provided some property for that shelter. And that partnership has, has grown over time, and as a result, has helped keep many women and children from experiencing homelessness on our streets. Open Door Network is now set to begin construction on a new campus, a much-needed campus. If you've visited the current site, it is in, well, I would say, close to disrepair. It is, it is, there's a lot of maintenance issues at that property, and so it is necessary for them to move on and to, and to have a better facility for those that they serve. One of the issues that impedes their progress are these impact fees, and we've talked about impact fees in a lot of different venues, and it, it does not make a lot of sense to me how we can impose park impact fees on this particular project. And so, I would like to ask staff to bring back a resolution to this council so that we can waive those impact fees through a resolution approved and adopted by this, this body. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
Yeah, I just, if I, Ms. Smoke, I want to apologize. I thought PSVS made the recommendations to not include traffic calming in PSVS monies.
That is correct, councilmember.
And that's what I was stating. And on your other issue, the Moss Adams was referring to the five-foot bike lanes on our tierials, which I absolutely agree are not safe. What we have built is not safe. We need to do better, is the point. And I agree. The answer is all of the above. We need more enforcement. We need accountability. We need jail beds. We need, but we also need traffic calming. We need to design our streets so that people drive safer naturally. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. I don't see other requests to speak. This week is National Police Week, and tomorrow is Peace Officers Memorial Day, and we're just so grateful that all across our country, we're paying tribute to the officers who have died in the line of duty or have been disabled, both federally, at the state level, and locally, and thank you to our local law enforcement. And with that, we stand adjourned at 6:11.